Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Monday, July 16, and we're getting some feedback here, so we'll figure that out. If everybody can rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
That's probably that, those two are together. Alrighty, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief White, could you do the honors? Alrighty, that's better. We figured out where the hum was.
Gotcha.
Test.
Can't hear you.
Hang on a second, technical difficulties.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Just think how much that guy got paid to say that phrase. If you'd like to join me in a word or prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, we pray for our nation today. We pray for our president and his cabinet and all their efforts and energies, Lord. Pray for peace and freedom. Father God, we thank you, the groups tonight that we're bringing before you of what they do to contribute to our community. We thank you, ask that you bless them and multiply their gifts. Thank you for the historical society and their endeavors to capture our history and share that with others. Lord, we thank you for the Cancer Society and all their energies and efforts and what they do to help our patients as well. Lord, we ask that you bless this community. We lift this up in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Chief. At this time, I'd like to call the City Council meeting to order. It is approximately 6:35. Hang on a second. They're adjusting the mics upstairs. Alrighty, we'll see what we can do here. It is approximately 6:35 PM. We have four members of council present this evening. Our first order of business is we have a resolution honoring the Oviedo Historical Society, so council, if you can all join me down front and if members of the Historical Society can come up.
Well, tonight, we have something very special to celebrate. We have a resolution from the city for the Oviedo Historical Society, who's been serving the city for over 45 years, so that is pretty impressive. The resolution reads, "A Resolution of the City of Oviedo, Florida, honoring the Oviedo Historical Society for 45 years of faithful service to the Oviedo community. Whereas the Oviedo Historical Society was founded in 1973 by a dedicated group of citizens in which the founding mission remains today to collect and preserve the history of Oviedo for the enrichment of the community. And whereas the Oviedo Historical Society provides historical information on the Oviedo and surrounding regions with the Oviedo Biography of a Town Book written by the late Richard Addicks," I believe it's Dr. Richard Addicks, "and Donna Neely. And whereas the Oviedo Historical Society provides a historical cultural museum located at the historic Lawton House, thereby displaying Oviedo's rich history dating back to the creation of the town in 1879. Whereas the Oviedo Historical Society provides a monthly farmer's market achieving six years of service and recognizes one of the most favored community events. And whereas the Oviedo Historical Society provides an annual tree lighting event as a long cherished hometown community event. And also whereas the Oviedo Historical Society also provides student scholarships, student internships, historical presentations, and specialized historical education to the elementary age school children. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council, the City of Oviedo, Florida, we express its heartfelt appreciation to the Oviedo Historical Society and all of its members, past and present, and in recognition of this outstanding service to the Oviedo community for 45 years of faithful service. This is presented the 16th day of July. I have signed it. It has the city seal. Folks, thank you so very much."
Don, would you like to say a few words? Sorry to put you on the spot.
I appreciate that. So my name is Dawn Jensen. I'm the current president of the Oviedo Historical Society and also the current marketing manager. And this is your invitation to join us and learn about the history and the legacy of Oviedo. So our job is, as we're tasked, and as I say we're tasked, is to create a legacy and a community for our residents, both new and ones that have expanded a number of generations. I do appreciate all that you do because I do recognize some of our city council members as characters during other events that we have throughout the year, and I would like to invite each and every one of you to join us on Saturdays, the first Saturday of every month for our farmer's market. I think you'll find it's a really wonderful community event. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ladies, and great job by everyone. Give them a big round of applause. Alrighty, Drew, we might as well stay down here because the next item on the agenda, I believe, is the Relay for Life presentation. So Drew, why don't you come on up here?
Thank you, member, I mean mayor, members of council. I got ahead of myself. Yeah, this is one of our funnest times of the year. This is the, tonight, we are donating, doing our donation to American Cancer Society and Relay for Life. So just wanted to say a couple of things. Of course, I want to thank council for your continued involvement. Thanks any major for allowing our staff. We do multiple relay fundraisers throughout the year, not only the golf outing, but we also do jean day Fridays, that staff pay a dollar to be able to wear jeans on Friday. We also do cheesesteak Fridays, which I think is one of our council's, some of their fun Friday, especially Councilman Hinckin. He loves those. But just first of all, I'd like to bring up, we've got a couple of things before we present the check to Tab and his folks. I want to bring up Chris Jones and Don Collins from Republic Services, if they'd come up. Republic Services continue to be our top sponsor this year, once again. They donated $6,000 to Relay for the ninth year consecutive, so let's give them a round of applause.
Mayor, I'm going to have you read this, if you would, please. Do the presentation. Sir, Drew, thank you. Gentlemen, come on over. We don't bite. Alrighty, we have, the plaque reads, "This is from the City of Oviedo and the American Cancer Society would like to recognize our title sponsor, Republic Services, for your continued support of the Relay for Life Golf Outing Event, and this one is for 2018. And guys, you are just incredible community partners. I mean, not only do you pick the garbage up every day, every week for the citizens, but you give so much back, so we can't, we can never thank you enough. We appreciate it."
Appreciate it very much. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
That, that, that was, boy, that was like a ninja, huh?
Great catch, man.
I was thinking it's such a beautiful fact. There was exploding.
Thank you so much, guys. Big round of applause for Republic.
Thank you, sir. Before I bring Tab up, I just wanted to give you a couple of little facts. This past year, once again, this was our ninth year doing the golf outing. To date, before we present this check tonight, the city had donated $162,521 to Relay for American Cancer Society. Nine years. Excuse me, eight years. This is number nine. Next year's number 10. Next year's the big one, hopefully, so. Without further ado, I'd like to bring up Tad Bartlett. He's our area rep, and he's got a couple of other people with him that he will introduce and do a couple of things before we do the check presentation, because I know he wants to know this so bad. I got to tell you a little thing. Tab takes all these checks and he uses them like wallpaper on his office, and he's got like eight of them right now, so. Tab?
Thank you, mayor, council, Drew. Thank you all so much. This, trust me, this does not get old, and it doesn't happen all the time for me. I cover a pretty vast territory for the American Cancer Society, and I can tell you that there are not very many communities like this. That's not to say anything against them, but I can assure you that the type of community that is represented and is Oviedo is so unique. And again, to have your support in the, in the city, our event typically raises anywhere from $85,000 to $100,000 a year, so this money truly is a great percentage, a 20% of our, of our annual take. And I can tell you that it is, a lot of the money does stay right here. If you've been here before and you've heard me speak, I know last year when I introduced Jen O'Leary, who is our 2018, 2019 volunteer event lead, as well as Chris Anderson, who is our sponsorship chair, these two individuals are out there in the community, raising money, helping, and you know, it, it just, it's all full circle. And, and I know Chris has had his own personal battle with cancer. Jen has had her own personal battle with cancer. She's had family members, but it's, it's kind of funny to see that, not funny, but it's unique to see the progression that her journey with Relay has taken, because her and her husband got involved back in 2000, 99, long before any of them were diagnosed or had anything like that. And so through their course of just being a team member, Relay member, they've, you know, gone on to be on the committee, and recently, you know, she brought her aunt into the resource room over in Winter Park to get a free wig, you know, and unfortunately, we just lost her aunt, but her spirit lives on and it just gives us more reason. So despite, you know, the fact that Relay is, you know, and will continue to be a part of this community, just know that every year, there are still people that hear those words, "You have cancer." And we want to make sure that we're always there as a place for them to turn should they need it, because some people can't get to and from treatment because they don't have a support network. A lot of those, you know, a lot of people are fortunate enough to have that, but some don't. So we actually can provide them rides. We can provide them lodging next to their treatment facilities and things like that, in addition to our research and our customer support line, because again, it's still about 50/50. When people hear they have cancer, 50% of them turn to us as a resource. They call us to find out what do they need to do next. So it's funds like this, it's time in the community, and I can't say thank you enough for the overall support that you all provide. And again, this is not the Tab Show, this is not the Drew Show. This is truly a community coming together and, and following the model that helps keep us helping those who have been exposed to this disease. So I want to say a personal thank you to Jen and to Chris, to Drew, and again, to council. So thank you very much.
So at this time, what I'd like you to do, mayor, is if you come over.
Where's the deputy mayor?
That's fine. If y'all come over and I'll hold the, and just, we're just, I will tell you, going into this year, yeah, don't pull, it's not as heavy a check as it used to be, you know? So I'm going to hold the check while y'all uncover. I will tell you, before we do this, the previous high, I'm not saying it's higher, but the previous high in the past had been $27,000. We did that in 2014, so if you would. $28,000 this year. But Tab, you can't, you can't cash it because the mayor hasn't signed it yet.
And you keep the checks. I'm not lying, I love them.
Yeah, so, yeah, so this is, this is the highest we've given. This is great, so I will tell you, if my math is right, it puts it to where now we've donated $190,521, and I'm doing that without my glasses, so is that what it is?
Yes, that is.
So that's, we're happy about that, and we hope we can continue this community partnership.
Mayor.
If I can, real quick, mayor, I just would like to take the time and opportunity, and I'd like to thank Sean Fitzgerald and Terry Martini Ash, they were really a big help to me this year, and then, of course, all of our recreation and park staff and all the other city staff that partaken in this throughout the year, so we just want to thank them also.
And I would like to present you.
Present that to the council.
Present the mayor. For, presented to the City of Oviedo for outstanding support of Relay for Life 2018.
And Tab, I figured you probably really want the real check too, so we'll give you the actual check also.
Alright, there you go. Well, here, let's hold this.
Let's get another, one more, come on in. You guys, man.
Thank you.
It's good to see you too.
Thank you, Drew. Great job.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I'll grab it. I'm going to put it outside.
$190,000 over nine years for Relay, American Cancer Society, $28,000 this year. That is truly a team effort amongst everyone on staff, and some folks have asked in the past, you know, why American Cancer Society, and years back, the city management at the time, staff came to them and said, hey, we want to rally around something and raise funds for it. So it was actually the entire staff, am I correct, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Were polled, and American Cancer Society is what was chosen as the charity for the city for all the events all year round. And as you can see, the results have been exceptional, and Tab says that they operate on about $100,000 fundraising budget, and we're able to provide $28,000. That, that is just darn impressive, so great job by everybody. Alrighty, moving along, we're up to item number three on our agenda, which is the approval of the minutes for our June 18 regular session and for our June 25 work session, and I'd like to entertain a motion to do so. Mr. Mayor? No? Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'm good.
Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to our public comment portion of the meeting. Public is free to address us on any issue, whether it's on the agenda, without public comment, or just anything else. I have two written requests this evening, and the first one comes from Barry Kamack. Just name and address for the record and...
Good evening. Barry Kamack, 835 Palmetto Street here in Oviedo. Tonight, we're going to be discussing a senior committee. Mr. Britton came up with this last year. We had our first meeting in January, and I was one of the first people, there was four of us that started, and it's grown to quite a large group of people. A lot of input has gone into this over the last seven months. We've been meeting quite regularly. And at this time, we need council's help. We don't expect a free ride, and we are the largest growing population in this city. 60% of you here tonight qualify for the senior program on age alone, so we need to address it. We actually have really no facilities for the...
Now, wait a second. Which 60% is it? I'm just curious.
From the center on to the right.
There you go.
That's 75%.
Well, if you count the full council, that's correct. But we're here to ask your help. We're now at a point now, we have a good roadmap of what we want to do, great, a lot of ideas, but again, we're not looking for something for free. We know there's a cost recovery. We understand that, they've been very good about explaining that. But again, at this point, we need your help, and tonight, Mr. Britton's going to discuss that with you. So I hope that council will now start focusing on this segment of the community, because we are going to need to do something here in the very near future in order to accommodate the needs and requirements of this population in our city. So I thank you very much for your time, and I'm sure you'll take a tear of this for us. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Thank you. Alrighty, the next written request comes from Laura Cap. And I'm just going to brag on Laura just a little bit, folks, because many of you probably don't realize that it was 12, 13, 14 years ago when you first...
More like 18.
Yeah, first brought senior issues to the forefront of city council and actually got part of our land development code changed in order to help accommodate seniors and...
With Brian's help.
What was that called, Brian?
Communities for Lifetime.
Communities for Lifetime, thank you, just escaped me. But Laura?
Okay, well, hello, everybody. So yes, after many...
Just name and address real quick for the...
Oh, Laura Cap.
We don't want Barbara to get upset.
Yeah, 505 Evening Sky Drive, Oviedo. So after many years of working on behalf of Oviedo seniors, I am very pleased to see the report and recommendations that you have or will receive tonight, and I do urge the council to support these recommendations and to take concrete steps to make them happen. I want to thank Councilwoman Britton for spearheading this effort, as well as Assistant City Manager Patrick Kelly and the dedicated city staff who have sought and listened to the community input. As Barry said, many of my fellow seniors and I have given our time over many weeks to discuss and formulate these plans and recommendations for senior programs and activities, and hopefully, one day, a senior activity center. So just wanted to give my support to this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is the end of the written request. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to address council at this time? Desta first.
Good evening. My name is Desta Horner, 652 Forest Cove, and I want to take this opportunity not only to thank you for your leadership, but also to thank your employees. For the record, I wanted to tell you that Brian Cobb, who we all value very much, Brian was asked to come down to be one of the interviewees on a program that WUCF-TV is doing for the city of Oviedo. They have selected Oviedo for their Central Florida Road Trips Program. It will be seen sometime in September. But we asked him to join us, along with about six other residents of this town, to speak about the history of Oviedo. And he just showed up, he said, "Tell me what you want me to do." Turns out, we had so many people that came, it was going to be a long time, so Brian immediately says, "Call me, I'll come back. I've got city business to do." I said, "Okay." And so he went there and, you know, ready to come, the minute we wanted him, but he had work to do. The other person I want to say something about is Drew Bowler. He was, when we were having this taping of this program for, to, to show off Oviedo, he had a whole team at Friendship Park, cutting and sawing, mulching and carrying on, and when I got there, they're, oh, no, they won't ever be able to tape under these conditions. Have interviews with the wood mulcher going on, it wouldn't work. So I went outside and I talked to him, he happened to drive up the moment, and I said, "I don't know what to do. We've got to have you stop, but I know it's your, your program." So he just looked right at me, said, "We'll take care of it. Don't worry, when you're finished, let Jared know, and we'll start up again." Not a blink of an eye, not a, "Oh, why didn't you call me and tell me?" Nothing, just immediate action for the sake of the residents and Oviedo. So as a member of the Oviedo Historical Society, we really appreciate your staff.
Thank you, Desta. Thank you. It's great to hear. Yes, ma'am, in the back. Just name and address for the record, please. We have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Helen Jones. This is Andy Jones, my husband. We live on Gwynne Circle in Alafoya Woods. This is our third meeting in a row. We, I know there wasn't one two weeks ago. Six weeks ago, we brought forward that we had been waiting for over 40 days, or close to 40 days, to hear back from Brian Cobb, or in friends, an email that we had been asking for answers about animal waste being deposited in our yard by people walking their dogs. A lot of times, they don't even pick it up. There are all these different issues to consider, whether they pick it up, don't pick it up, number one, number two, we've been thrown all over the place. Anybody who's out there listening, who's gone through all this, you know, chime in and maybe the action will go a little quicker, but we were told, I believe, Mr. Britton asked if two weeks was sufficient. Mr. Cobb didn't hesitate, he said that should work. I guess I've been told since that there have been some run-ins that have caused problems that they haven't quite ironed it out with Seminole County yet, and there's still issues. I would like feedback. I was also, Mr. Britton said, at least give some feedback within two weeks, and those two weeks later, we didn't get any feedback. We just got put off. And even though I got a nice email the other day telling me that it's still being worked on, I want feedback. I want specific details about what's taken six weeks instead of two. Also, there seems to be a real issue for us with public records. I don't know if everybody else has this issue, and we know that the lady that runs it is a very nice lady, but I don't think that it's always her decision what comes out in the actual emails as far as her responses to requests for things. My specific issue is body cams, and I've asked a lot of questions about pricing, because I feel like the prices we've been charged are astronomical. We have paid close to $60 an hour to have body cams looked at by a lieutenant of the Oviedo Police Department, and they said that that price is based on a lieutenant's salary and benefits package figured out into an hourly rate, and then we're billed at that rate. And then the lieutenant that was doing it for us months ago, he was cutting things off, and things were starting in the middle, and things were blurry that had no reason to be blurry, like an officer's name tag and things, so there were all kinds of issues that were coming up, and we asked Mr. Cobb about those issues, and in a very long email, I believe we copied you guys on some of those, never got any response about the price of body cams, and Ms. Grigsby will not answer questions. She's told me it's not in her job description. So, "Is there a standard hourly rate for body cam preparation for public release in the city of Oviedo? If there isn't a standard hourly rate, if it's a fluctuating rate, as I was told in writing today by Ms. Grigsby, why does it fluctuate? Why is it based on who's handling it instead of a fair rate like Sanford charges of 44 cents per minute? Forty cents, 44 cents a minute comes out to less than half of most of the charges I've been given for the body cams I've requested, and the body cams I'm requesting are only to hear what police and neighbors are saying about me that are a lot of untrue things. I have a right to hear what police are saying, and some of the things I've been hearing are horrific, like that they wish I would just die so they wouldn't have to deal with me anymore, like laughing when they hear sexual harassment comments that my husband is sharing with a member of the Sheriff's Department because we cannot call Oviedo Police anymore at our home, and that they will not leave our property while we are talking to, the Oviedo Police will not leave our property while we are talking to the Sheriff's Department because they said they have to stay, and I said, "You don't have to be on private property, you can be on public property."
Three minutes.
But they say it's their jurisdiction, so we have no police protection, and that's kind of scary to say since I just told you where we live. But I, this all started under Chief Chud now, back in August of last year, and we've had a lot of problems since Dale Coleman took over too. And I would like citizens that have had problems with body cams and with officers siding with one person over another based on likability or gender or...
Ma'am?
Something like that to come forward and say what you're going through too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody.
Anybody else like to address city council? Seeing and hearing none, we will move on. We're on to our consent agenda. It's items number five through eight. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
No, sir.
Looks good.
Deputy Mayor, you good?
Good.
Good. Alrighty. All those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along to our first public hearing, that is item number nine. Let me just catch up here on the-- Alright, ordinance number 1672. Mr. Group, can you read that by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is emergency ordinance number 1672. An emergency ordinance the city of Oviedo, Florida enacted by a two-thirds vote, amending section two of ordinance number 1667, providing for legislative findings and intent in adopting an expert's report pertaining thereto, amending article four of chapter 42 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Oviedo, providing for definitions, amending section 42-74 and section 42-77 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Oviedo, providing for other associated and related matters and the taking of implementing administrative actions, providing for a savings provision, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification and the correction of discrepancies there, and providing for an effective date. That's the emergency ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor. And if I may, let me explain what's going on here.
Sure, of course.
Item number 11 on your agenda is the proposed adoption of the preliminary rate resolution for the street lighting assessment program of the city. The ordinance 1667 that you had enacted some time ago provided for certain basis of charging and the adoption of a study, as I recall, from November of 2017. I think that's what it was. In any event, the resolution that's proposed in item number 11 deviates from the prior ordinance that you enacted in terms of the basis which you could, you'll charge the assessment for street lighting. This emergency ordinance adopts the new rate study and provides for the basis of charging the assessment, which is consistent with the resolution that's set on your agenda for item number 11. That's the reason that you're enacting an emergency ordinance. The reason you're reenacting it, real quick, is just to make sure that if anybody was to ever challenge what you're doing, it's both enacted under the emergency provisions, which requires a two-thirds vote, and it's enacted under the regular provisions, so that it removes all doubt. That's the short discussion of the matter.
Thank you, Mr. Group. Mr. Cobb, do you have anything to add?
That's basically it, Mayor. The original ordinance that was done had three different options for assessments. And if you remember from your June 25th work session, we came up with a fourth option. And so, Mr. Group, the way that the wording is in the code is that it's every parcel. And so, it doesn't give you flexibility to do a fourth option. So what this does, we enact this emergency ordinance now, and then when you consider, that way, when you consider the preliminary rate, then you will have an ordinance that it's consistent with.
Great, thank you, Mr. Cobb. This is a public hearing on this item. I have no written request. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address council? Seeing and hearing none, I will close public hearing and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hinkin?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 1673.
Two.
1672. Oh, two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilman Hinkin?
No, sir.
Councilman Pollak?
None.
Deputy Mayor?
I'm good, thank you.
Alrighty. Well, I think it was explained in thorough detail by our city attorney. And, Mr. Group, we appreciate you always looking out for the best of the city.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I just want to say, my report shows 1673, just to let you know.
Oh, it does?
Yes, it does.
None. Oh, it does, actually.
Yes, it does. So I just want to clarify, are we 1673 or 1672?
No, I think you're on item number 10.
I'm missing one. Alright, go ahead.
No worries. It's 1672. Alright, so the motion on the table is to adopt ordinance number 1672. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I don't even have nine, can't find it. Oh, there it is, I got it.
You found it?
Yep. No worries.
Alrighty, we're moving along. We're on to item number 10, which is the first reading of ordinance number 1673. Mr. Group, can you do us the honors?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Oviedo, Florida, amending section two of ordinance number 1667, providing for legislative findings and intent in adopting an expert's report pertaining thereto, amending article four of chapter 42 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Oviedo, providing for definitions, amending section 42-74 and 42-77 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Oviedo, providing for other associated related matters and the taking of administrative actions, providing for a savings provision, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for the codification and the correction of discrepancies there, and providing for an effective date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. As Mr. Group explained with the prior item, this is the same ordinance taking it through the normal adoption process. And so, tonight, we're recommending that the city council schedule a public hearing for Monday, August 6, 2018.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing on August 6, 2018, on ordinance number 1673, here at Oviedo City Hall, in the Oviedo City Council chambers, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion?
Good.
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 Keith?
Good.
Alrighty. Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor of the motion to schedule the public hearing on August 6, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to item number 11. That is resolution number 3578-18, the preliminary rate resolution. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for council to approve a preliminary rate resolution for the implementation of the street lighting assessment for fiscal year 2018-19. The, this is the next step in the implementation of your street light assessment program. The assessment is based on what was reviewed at your June 25th work session, in which the single-family residential uses, as well as multifamily of 10 units or less, will be charged one EBU. And also, then what we call general service parcels, which are non-residential parcels, and multifamily greater than 10 dwelling units, they will be charged one EBU, equivalent benefit unit, per 0.26 acres of property. So tonight, what we would ask is, and this is per statute, that we adopt the preliminary rate resolution, and then also schedule a public hearing for August the 20th. At that time, you will be asked to adopt a final rate resolution. And so, but tonight, we are recommending that you adopt the resolution, which would adopt the preliminary rate resolution, and then schedule the public hearing for August 20th. And what this does, it sets the wheels in motion for our work with the property praiser and the tax collector, so that we can get all the required notices out to the public.
Alrighty, Mr. Cobb, just a little unclear. Are you asking me to call for a motion to adopt this resolution and separately schedule a public hearing?
I believe the resolution, the resolution schedules a public hearing.
The resolution's doing it.
Yes, sir.
I don't have to do that separately?
No, sir.
Alrighty, thank you for the clarification. Alrighty, I have no request to speak for him, so what is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 3578-18.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Looks good.
Deputy Mayor?
Looks good.
Councilmember? Alrighty. Hearing none, I will call the vote. All those in favor of adopting resolution 3578-818, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to item number 12. That is resolution number 3581-18, establishing, establishing, excuse me, the tentative fiscal year 2018-19 millage rate, and scheduling the first budget public hearing. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for council to establish the tentative millage rate for fiscal year 1819. Schedule the first public hearing for, I believe it's September the, let's see, the 8th or 6th? I think it's 6th, September the 6th, 2018. The tentative millage, the balance, actually, the city council may, after tonight, reduce the tentative millage rate. However, you will not be able to increase the tentative millage rate without going through a very difficult notification process that would be very costly to the city. For practical purposes, the proposed resolution establishes the maximum property tax millage for the next fiscal year. This year, the proposed tentative millage rate is a combination of the general fund millage rate of 5.0970 and the general obligation bond rate for Oviedo on the park, which is 0.1850, for a total millage rate of 5.2820. I would also like to advise council that this total rate, 5.2820, is the same as last year's total millage rate as well, so there's not an increase in the total millage. This millage rate will result, the millage rate of 5.0970 will result in $13,521,460 in property taxes for the fiscal year. When you budget at the 95% level required by state statute, this will be an increase of $1,225,713 for the fiscal year. Setting the millage rate at the, for the general fund at 5.0970 mils will result in a citywide tax increase of 5.59% above the rollback rate of 4.8272 mils. It's recommended tonight that the city council adopt resolution number 3581-18. And it would like to also call your attention to your memorandum. There is, the staff has provided special language that needs to be stated during your motion. So if you would use that language while making your motion, that would be most appreciated. That's my presentation, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, I'd like to, this time, I'd like to adopt a motion to adopt resolution number 3581-18, adopting a tentative ad valorem millage rate of 5.0970 mils for fiscal year 2018-19, adopting a tentative general obligation bond millage rate of 0.1850 mils for fiscal year 2018-19, adopting a tentative total millage rate of 5.28220 mils, which results in a citywide increase of 5.59% above the rollback rate of 4.8272 mils, and scheduling the first public hearing for September 6, 2018, at 6:30 PM, City Hall, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Now, I just want to say, Steph, it was another magnificent job in balancing the budget. You know, the mayor just read a 60-second motion, but we know that took months of very hard work and long days to balance the budget, contrary to what people might have heard in social media of some craziness of 20% increases. That is not the case. Matter of fact, and Mr. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but our millage rate now is lower than it was when I got here in '05, and even lower when he got here a few years before me. Same with Councilman Britton. So, Steph, you worked in wonders with that. And my hat's off to you tonight, so it's good.
Councilman Pollak, anything?
Thank you very much. I know this was a difficult one, as was last year's and the years before. Your hard work, we all really appreciate your hard work in keeping these millage rates down. So, thank you very much.
Councilman Britton?
Same thing. Thanks, Steph. I think we got a good budget. We'll go on from here.
Great job, as always, from me. What is it, Jerry? Three more years and we get rid of all that old, some of that old bond debt, right? About three, four years? And that'll make your lives even, maybe a little easier, who knows? We'll wait and see. But magnificent job. And as Councilman Hinkin said, you know, what I read in 60 seconds, you know, doesn't even begin to establish the amount of work that staff puts in, because they start back in February, January? Yeah, with preliminary hearings and briefings of the council and all sorts of stuff. And I also appreciate, I noticed inside the package, this year, we have the list of items that we're going to do without in order to balance the budget and keep the millage exactly the same. So that's the first time that I remember seeing a list that comprehensive put in our package, and I do appreciate that. I know Councilman Pollak had originally asked for the kitchen sink budget, and I'm glad that you added that all in there, so now we know what the goals are moving forward. But thank you to everyone on staff.
Mr. Mayor? Yes? Just a quick, a quick comment. You know, it's very important, sometimes people react to things that they hear. And over the last two months, what, you know, was on social media, that was reported and things in the news, I would just always caution the city residents, you know, when you're working with staff or with us, until we actually do it, don't react to it. I mean, I've been here so long now that I've seen this happen. You know, people throw out things and they alarm people. And one thing about me is I like to wait till it's all done. You know, there's a process you go through. And when it looks bad, it always turns out to be fine. And, you know, we have a staff here that, it may take them a little time to get certain things done, but I will tell you, in the end, when the result comes, it's usually good. So don't jump to conclusions. Don't believe everything you see on TV and whatever until we actually do it. But I can't tell you, this, out of all the budgets we did, I think this one, I'm the most proud of, because the citizens didn't get their millage rate increased, and the services are very high in the city, and we're on a good path. And, you know, clearly, the best days are ahead. So, great job again.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to add one thing. It's kind of a history lesson, but the 5.282 is not a coincidence. If you go back, and I've done this in the past, some of the budgets going back into the 70s and 80s were literally one piece of paper of handwritten notes. And if you go back, 5.3 was the millage rate for forever, up until somewhere in the 90s, early 2000s. Yeah. And it was that. So our agreement with staff is that the general fund and obligation, general obligation bond rate is 5.3. Try to get as close to that as you can. So that's what we've been working at for all these years. We, I think when we were here, it was much higher than that, maybe 5.8. We've worked all these years to try to get it down somewhere in that range. So that's, that's the process we've put in place. Staff does a great job of getting in the box and helping us out to balance it. So, Jerry? Good job. Kelly? Good job. Thanks.
That's right. Don't forget about Kelly. She's really the one that does all the work.
That's right. And let me tell you, the budget package we got was more than one page. I will tell you that.
I like the nice spreadsheets we get nowadays, the ones that actually do things.
So do I.
Yeah, well, coming from the accountant on the council. Anything else? Hearing and seeing none, we have a motion on the table to set the public hearing for resolution 3581-18 on September 6, 2018, 6:30 PM, here at City Hall. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, next item is item number 13, and that is a discussion on senior programming. So at this time, I'll just give it to Mr. Cobb for a brief introduction, So at this time, I'll just give it to Mr. Cobb for a brief introduction, then we'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor. Sorry, Brian.
Well, it's no problem.
Want to, want me to ask Patrick to do it?
My iPad went a little slow. No, thank you, Mayor. This is a request for council to discuss and give direction regarding recommendations made by the senior programming committee. Mr. Britton asked for consensus a few meetings ago to, to have a group come together and to give the city feedback. He worked with Mr., worked with Assistant City Manager, sorry, I'm playing, sorry, Patrick. And they met with a group of citizens over a number of meetings and have produced a very, very good report, and so I'd like to actually turn it over to Mr. Britton and let him present their findings.
Okay, great, thank you. Deputy Mayor, floor is yours.
All right, thanks. Well, it's kind of humbling up here. We started out with four people or so, word of mouth that we wanted to do this, and I just counted in the report, we had over 60 residents from both within the city and outside the city come in with their ideas and suggestions over a three or four month period. We covered many, many topics, wide spectrum of things, and Patrick, thank you for your facilitation skills to try to narrow down. We've got a list of five things. I see some folks in the audience, why don't, if you've served on the committee in any capacity, why don't you just stand up and let us recognize you? Kenny? Barry? Laura? So this is just a few of the folks, so please give them a hand.
The, I don't know if you've all read the report, I suspect it's going to be on the city site, the server. It took many, many, many ideas and many concepts. We tried to see if we can integrate other cities' programs, but we came down to five key recommendations. And of, of those, the most important, I think, is the, the desire to have a dedicated community center or a place for seniors to meet and, and for us to have senior programming. We've talked about it in here before, about maybe temporary places, but we've got to start, in my opinion, to set the priorities, to have a permanent dedicated facility, and in my mind, you know, we've got 20% of the population are senior, senior, of senior age, I'd like to see the programming match those of our youth programs, and I think we can do that, it's just a matter of making the priorities. So that's going to be my goal, I didn't want to spend a lot of time up here going over it. Some of the other suggestions that I think we can do, the low, the low hanging fruit, are improving communications, I've already seen a big increase in that. Drew, thank you to, to your staff. I believe you've got dedicated staff working on the senior program, is that correct, Drew?
Working towards transportation.
Improving transportation, I see that as a long-term thing, but we, we can leverage some of the technology with Uber and Lyft and, and links and, and improve that. And finally, we need to expand the programming base that came out of the survey from the committee. There were, there were dozens of topics that we can pull from. We're already, in fact, while I'm thinking about it, Drew, why don't you come up here and, and tell us some of the activities we've already got that are, are focused on programming? Or Brian, or Patrick, you can do the same thing. But as we went through the process, we tried to say, are, are we already doing this? Is there a desire to have a pickleball league? And oh, by the way, we already have a pickleball league, what about a bowling league? So Patrick, go ahead and fill us in on those.
Correct. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Britton and council. When we started this process, as Debbie May said, we only had four people show up, and as word of mouth spread, more and more folks showed interest, and as part of that interest, we've been communicating with our recreation parks department, saying, hey, what's going on, you know, with senior programming? What do we have? What can we do quickly? You know, what options are there, out there? Mr. Boweare quickly had some new folks come on board. Jack Whitaker and Jesse, I cannot pronounce her last name, Con.
I don't either.
Both participated in the process with us. They spear, Jesse, for instance, spearheaded a lunch and learn program, which has met four or five times, had topics such as technology, how seniors can better utilize technology, home safety, disaster preparedness is coming up, so we're doing things like that nowadays. Also, what we've done is, is highlight some of the programming that we have that may not have been promoted to a senior group. For instance, we had water aerobics classes that have been ongoing in the city and tried to bring some attention to that, as well as, as Debbie Mayor Britton said, pickleball, which is a, I had never heard of it. It's kind of a cross between table tennis and tennis, a smaller court, wiffle ball, soft paddles, low intensity. We've also got a couple other things in the works with trips, things like that, et cetera. So our Rec and Parks Department has taken this recommendations seriously and even tried to get the drop on us a little bit, and they've done a, a great job with that, so thank you.
So what I, what I see this document doing is just serving as kind of the seeds that we're planting for going forward, and what I'd like to leave us with, and maybe we can discuss it, is, is how to go forward. One thing I'd like to suggest is maybe keeping the, the committee semi-active, maybe meeting instead of every two weeks, maybe every couple of months, and giving them a status report or, or possibly getting feedback on how we're doing, which is always a good thing to get that feedback. So I'll leave it up to the group here to discuss, or, or not?
Well, you're just looking for consensus to keep it together every couple of months, I wouldn't see any issue with that.
Okay.
Does anybody have an issue with that?
No. Good. And, you know, we, obviously, we need to start at this point, we've already got the budget for the year coming up, but I think we need to put our hats on, and maybe, Brian, you guys can start working on suggestions or recommendations on how we can start implementing some of these big ticket items that, that we need to think about strategically and how we're going to get there. It's going to be a multi-year effort, but, you know, I think we can do it, I think we can make this a really, really cool program.
Good. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to say real quick, just, just reading this and to thank Councilman Britton for, for taking that over, it goes to pretty much what I always say, things don't always happen right away, but when they, they start to develop, they, they turn out really well, and thank you to the people that have served on that committee. I would just say for me, the one thing I think that will drive it all is if we can finally get the facility, whether it be the old post office or wherever else we can do it, because once you have a, you have a roof over your head in a home, things tend to blossom and develop, so as we go towards, you know, other budgets, budget years and, and, you know, we find some extra, extra magic funds, like Mayor Mary Lou used to tell us, right, who was also behind this, you know, and helped a lot with it, so I think get, get the building first, and then everything else will fall in place, but I think we're all, we're all behind you guys, and it's, it's long needed, and we're going to get there. But thanks to all of you, thanks to Deputy Mayor, and look forward to seeing that all come to life.
Thank you.
Councilman Pollak?
So for the, for the, the building, are there any kind of grants that we can, we can start looking at? Is there, is there a, somebody that, that can start spearheading that, that part of it? Because if we can, the, the sooner we can get the funds, the sooner we can.
There's, there's some options to that. One Laura commented, suggested was maybe a 501(c)(3) that we can start raising funds for.
Oh, we have that already.
For a senior, senior program?
I think under the Friends of Oviedo, there's all different categories.
Okay.
Am I correct? Jerry?
Possibly, yes.
Okay.
The other thing was, well, now I lost my train of thought, but I'll.
I'm sorry, Keith.
The 501(c)(3), the other thing is, we have a plan, and if you use the ION model, which is what we modeled this after, once we had a formal plan in place with ION, we qualified for all kinds of grant money. So I'm hoping we can maybe take this document, turn it into a formal plan, and then, and then go look for grants, which I, I can't believe there wouldn't be any out there to, to go seek.
Anything else, Bob?
That's all I have.
You know, I, I think this is a great idea because of, you know, many reasons, it is a growing population, we've been a community of kids and cul-de-sacs, and now we're becoming slowly a community of empty nesters. I mean, it's just a natural progression of what's going to happen, and it happens in every and all communities. So something like this is needed, and Keith and everybody, Patrick, everybody who's part of the committee did a great job on putting together a framework, and as Keith always likes to say, low hanging fruit, which gets the ball rolling, which is what I see happening here. But I have a question, and we may not be able to answer it tonight, but I, I'd certainly like the answer to it, and I'll kind of explain where I'm going with it. Are the grants that are available easier to get once we've identified or have a facility operating? Because sometimes, once you have something going, as Keith was saying, even more than a plan, if you have an actual place. Has anybody talked to Ryan Ruski about this? I, either one of you, I don't care. Patrick, beat you to it, Drew.
I have not talked to Ryan specifically about this, but I've examined some state grants and qualifications are here and there, but Drew, Drew might be able to.
Maybe we need to talk to.
Mr. Ruski.
Yeah, bring Mr. Ruski in on this. And I'll get to where I'm going in a second.
Yeah, currently, if we were to apply, we would be possibly considered again for a Firdap grant, which is coming up later in the year. We, we have an open Firdap that we could still apply for. There is.
200,000 towards the facility.
It's a matching, yes, it'd be a $400,000 grant total with the city matching 200,000.
And we can match that in cash or in in-kind? Or is it?
It's a, it's a, yeah.
Cash?
Yeah. It's, it, well, and, and you can do it as far as in-kind services too, I mean, you know, if staffing is doing some of the work and stuff like that.
When will that free up?
I need to check. I think that grant process is in September. Ryan and I were just talking about a couple other grants that are coming up, but I know we have one, I think, that is in, because we have currently one for, a Firdap for OSC that we're getting ready to start, and I think we're, you can have three at any one moment, so we, we would be eligible to apply for another one.
The old post office.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I know we, we came up with this grand elaborate scheme five or six years ago, which was very nice, but if I remember, costly. Have we spent any time, or has staff spent any time, and knows an acceptable answer, figuring out what it would take, and I, I hate to use the word bare minimum, but let's just say at a minimum, to clean the place up, you know, get new glass on the front, get the landscaping cleaned up, get the fencing down, that dilapidated, whatever it is sticking off the side of it, ACs going, you know, good paint job inside. Have we put numbers together?
Yeah, we've, we've done that a couple times since we acquired the post office. As you know, we went through the process with the consultant to do the renovation and/or possibly tear down and build new. We stopped that process. We have looked at two different occasions as far as what it would cost just to bring it up to code. It is a little, I mean, it's not cheap, and we have, we'd have to revisit, I think the last time we went through that process was about a year ago, so we could revisit that again.
How much was it a year ago? About, just around, 400,000, 500,000, wait, wait, no, 300,000?
I want to, I want to say, do you recall, Brian, your mind conversation? I want to say it was close to.
All right, let, let, let's not throw out then a, I don't remember. Let's not throw out a guess, let's.
Yeah, I'd rather.
And share it?
Yes.
All right, and, and, you know, and here's where, just, again, thinking out loud. Is the old post office not in the dead center of the CRA?
It's in the CRA, yes, sir.
And you can get a Firdap, right?
We could apply, and one of the things I wanted to tell you about Firdap is routinely, once you apply, it's about a year process of, before you get notice and actually sign the contract, if you do, if you're accepted. Once you sign the contract, you have about three-year, you have a three-year window to complete the project. So it literally could be, you know, a three or four-year process, according to how fast we would move if council so choose to go forth with something like that.
All right. Could you possibly do this, and it's, I'm asking the question, but I'll get consensus council in a moment. Could you possibly find the old data on the post office? And I remember it was like ACs and it was a few things.
It's, it was roof, AC, renovation storefront, renovation of the bathrooms, bathrooms had to be built handicap accessible, there's other things that we have to do.
That's fine.
Sprinkle the building, things like that, yes.
Bring it back. Does it have sprinklers in it?
Does not have sprinklers in it.
Really? Wow.
It's a 60s era.
Yeah.
Little bunker.
See?
Yep.
Post office didn't care if the mail went on or smoked.
I, I think the, if I remember right, the biggest expense was the handicap accessibility, bringing, bringing the building inside.
Why don't you just refresh, refresh all our memories?
We will.
How about that? Let's refresh all our memories. You know, because you're building that beautiful park out of the pond areas that we approved.
Railroad.
Right, we, we approved that.
The, yeah, Charles of Rails.
A year ago, six months ago, something like that?
Just a few months.
Yeah, that's right. With the expansion of the ponds and the stormwater for the down, old historic downtown, blah, blah, blah. You know, it, it's such a nice, could be such a nice fixture as we envision incorporating that into the park. So, you know, if it's, if it's a matter of, you know, what comes first, the chicken or the egg, no pun intended, but, you know, we have to figure that out. I mean, do we have to start with something in order to open up the grants? You know, which may be the case. You know, it, it's not like, you know, back in the day when we were able to get community trust grants, go buy land, I mean, those were all dried up. I mean, if that's the case, and it's a matter of seed money, to put a plan together, to start cleaning the thing up, to start to turn the ACs back on, to staff it, you don't have to staff it with a bunch of people if it's just a few people, you know, not a few people, but if it's just a meeting spot, perhaps it's something the council.
We, we did an entire report that included staffing and programming.
Right, I remember seeing it, I just don't remember the numbers, because it was, you know, a couple of years ago at this point.
Yes, sir.
So if it's okay with council, if they can just kind of refresh our memory and find out from the grant writer, chicken and the egg, find out what grants are available, find out when that Firdap's available, and get it back in a report to us over the next 30 days or so. I mean, I realize you're just finishing up budget and all of that, but that could be something that's helpful.
We can do that.
You know, and if it's in the middle of the CRA, well, then perhaps there's other things that the CRA board can consider to help you get this thing started. Who knows?
Sounds good.
Is everyone okay with that?
Mr. Mayor, yes, definitely okay, and I.
Wait, let me just, Keith, you're okay?
Yeah, and I wanted to add a suggestion.
Okay, no problem, Bob, you're okay. Well, let me get the, we'll go Councilman Henkin, Deputy Mayor, then back to you.
And we'll get your idea. I, I just want to say, you know, that was, that was a great, great idea by the mayor with the CRA and at our CRA meeting. You know, I talked about, we have a redevelopment agency, let's do something that people can see immediately, and I'm just going to say this, because that really doesn't, doesn't faze me, but I'd rather see us take that money instead of pushing through Wood Street and fix that community center, because now you, you've given the community something to touch, and, and the money in the CRA, I mean, it's all about choices. You know, you take that money and, you know, it was, the number I recall when we were looking at it to rehab it really nice was about 850,000 when we went through it, it was up there. But to do what the mayor said, and maybe put it, put that at the top of the CRA, I mean, you're trying to fix up light in a CRA. That's a perfect thing to do. I'd rather fix that than punch through a road. We got plenty of roads, but anyway, that was, that was a good idea, but there's a lot of things we can do, but good, good call on that.
Keith, and then Bob.
Same thing, just wanted to make a suggestion, when you do the, the update, maybe look at the alternative of demolishing and building new, kind of a blue sky approach. If we've got that, that venue out there and that beautiful landscaping, I, I could envision a really nice, brand-new place right in the center of it. And, you know, we're talking long-term, but, you know, give us some ideas.
And if we're going to consider that, then, you know, we'll see if there's a private entity in, in Oviedo, private contractor, who would be willing to take it on outside of our city scope, and then do a public-private partnership on it, only because they'll be able to drive the prices down less than we will. Once we go out to bid, we know what happens, so it's the government, so they jack the prices. Anyway, I'm sorry, Bob.
I would like to take it, you know, a step further, when you're, when you're breaking down the, the costs, break down the, the mechanical and structural costs separate, because we've got a community full of, of scout troops, and those boys are always looking for Eagle projects, and, you know, when it comes to painting and landscaping and other things like that, we can, we can definitely reach out.
I, I see a team of folks out here.
And, but I, I think that those would be great projects, and, you know, and any, any boy scout would, would love to put his name on that. My Eagle project was actually doing a similar facility, doing the landscaping for it when I was in scout, so I know that they'll, that, that's, you know, something that they could do, they could raise the funds for it and take those things on, and it would also give you the, the relationships between the, the youth and the. And it would also give you the relationships between the youth and the seniors as well.
Okay, sounds good.
All righty, Drew, I think we're all pretty clear. But in the interim, again, I'm going to steal it from Deputy Mayor, the low-hanging fruit that's here, you're working on it, you're putting things together, you're pushing more information out, you know, the ball's rolling, let's keep it rolling.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Anything else, guys? No? Thank you. Good job. All righty, moving along, we're into report time. Mr. Cobb, you're up.
I have no report, Mayor.
Awesome. Mr. Grude, anything?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Even better. Councilman Pollak?
Despite the rain, the Fourth of July festival was great. I loved seeing the additional rides there and items, you know, despite the fireworks, we still, we did get a finale out of it.
I think we got the finale at the beginning. I think the finale opened it, it seemed.
But a great job to the staff. I'm putting that together, you know, I wish it would have held, the rains would have held out, but I think, that being said, it was still a wonderful event.
Things happen. Anything else?
No, I'm good.
Councilman Hankin, you're up.
Just two quick things. You know, I just wanted to address the folks that came in, like I did last time about the dogs and all of that stuff. Just sit tight. I had that conversation today with staff, and I will just tell you, it's not always easy to give a moment-by-moment thing because it changes so much when you're dealing with so many entities. And the problem that you have, I see it in my neighborhood, I'm sure we do, and I hate that. And it's, yes, a bit bigger than that, but, you know, just to say, just relax. Sometimes you don't hear things and then things come in. I will tell you, Mr. Cobb is clearly, he is the best of the best, and I've been worked with a lot of him, and he will get to the bottom of it and he'll get the county on board and will fix it, everything. And I would also add that our police force would never leave you hanging. That kind of disturbed me a little bit. Those guys are the best of the best, and I will just tell you, they will make sure that everybody is taken care of in the city. I mean, there's no place I'd rather be here in an emergency than in Oviedo. So, you know, we could debate all these things, but I'd just say, just have a little patience. We're going to get there. Just one other quick thing that some of you may have seen, but I just have to give, you know, publicly, thanks to our Public Works Department. Some of you may have saw it on the news, but Gina lost her engagement ring down the toilet accidentally in there cleaning, and it just fell, flushed it hysterical, gave it to her 30 years ago. Never thought that it would ever be recovered. And there was, you know, had a lot of meaning towards both, for both of us, but, you know, I called Bobby, I said, our Public Works Director, I said, is there any chances it could ever be recovered, you know? And he said, it is a complete shot in the dark, one in a million. Well, a lot of prayers to a lot of saints and people. And came out the next morning and sure enough, found it in the manhole. So, I mean, he said that probably will never happen again, so that's the kind of staff we have here that, thank you. The applause is to the Public Works, but, and Bobby said, you know, we would have did that to anybody. So if anybody ever flushed anything, don't think there's, don't think there's no hope. They pulled a miracle. And Ray Santana, who went into that manhole, I was standing right there. I said, you know, I told him, we opened it up and the both of us, we kind of thought we saw something, and he just jumped down and then twice in raw sewage and grabbed it. So that's the kind of staff that we have, but what a happy ending story. Went from a hysterical wife to a very happy-tier wife, but, you know, our Public Works and staff is just incredible. I'll never forget, that's a story for the ages and, you know, it's, Brian, just, you know, pat them on the back, give them a day off, whatever, so just leave it at that.
Great. Awesome. Deputy Mayor?
Okay, a couple of items here. First of all, there's an ION meeting this Thursday, and I'm kind of excited about it because we got contacted by Jackie Nitty from the Hope Foundation, Hope Helps, and they want to attend the meeting and see what ION's all about and maybe explore some partnerships or how they can support that community. So I'm looking forward to that. I'll be there to introduce the folks and see how that goes. There's a Calno meeting on August 1st, and this goes to the senior group. The agenda's going to be, we're going to host it at Oviedo on the park at the Cultural Center. And we're going to, the agenda will be to discuss other cities and what they do as far as senior programming and trade ideas and see if there's any kind of cross-pollination we can get out of that and see if we can maybe expand and integrate some of our services through that.
What night of the week is that? I'm sorry.
That's on Wednesday night, usually starts about 6 o'clock.
This Wednesday?
No, it's August 1st.
August 1st, okay. Thank you.
Third item, real quick, Brian, or I don't see Bobby, Amanda, can you sometime in the future, give us an update on the two Irma projects that, from storm damage? One's in the border of Twin Rivers and Little Creek. I happened to go down there a couple of weeks ago, and I was amazed at the extent of that damage. And I understand the damage in the live oak retention pond is even worse than what's over there. So I know Bobby gave me an update a few weeks ago, but I'd like to see when the bids are going to go out and when we think we might get those projects done, hopefully before hurricane season this year. You want to come and give an update? Sure.
Good evening.
Hi, Lex.
The projects are both out to bid.
They're out to bid, okay, good.
The bid opening is July 31st. By the time we award, I usually give a month, shop drawings and pre-construction, another month, and the construction duration is 195 days.
Okay.
So that's the schedule at this point.
So we'll be done by Christmas?
No.
That's a lot of damage.
That's a lot of damage. If you've gone down there, I don't know if you guys want to go down there and look at it, it's pretty extensive.
I saw the one in the live oak.
But it's just taken a little bit longer working with FEMA, so we get some reimbursement out of it.
Okay.
It's moving forward.
All right. It'd be helpful for the folks that are, keep on asking me if we can just put status up on the website somehow so we can get the word out.
Yeah, with Live Oak, what they ask, and I communicate to them, so I can communicate to Little Creek as well.
Okay, Twin Rivers.
Twin Rivers, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Got it.
And finally, I want to give Parks and Rec staff kudos. There was a wedding on August 6th at the Cultural Center, and two of Oviedo's finest officiated it. Patrick and I had, got to officiate a wedding, but I was really impressed with the way staff went in and set it up and converted it in a matter of minutes from the solemn, holy wedding ceremony to a kickoff dance party. So they came in and really did a good job. I don't see Fitzgerald in here, but they came in and in five minutes turned that whole place around for a nice little party.
How did the pastor do?
He did pretty good. We tag teamed it.
That is awesome.
It was my first rodeo, it wasn't Patrick's, so, but it turned out okay.
Funny thing, as a notary can marry people, but a mayor can't.
That's right.
So, who knows? Guess I have to go become a notary. But Patrick, great job.
That's it.
That's all you got? All righty, real quick, as far as hurricane repairs go, Deputy Mayor reminded me, Drew, when's the sun shade coming back over at the park? That's another one we get beat up on.
And it's in the process. It's supposed to be being shipped in time, so it should be in the next two or three weeks from when it ships.
All right, so it's been ordered, it's just about done being manufactured, and we'll be able to, is staff just going to hook it back up?
I think they, the last one, they'll, they'll use some, want to hook it up.
Okay. Thank you, Drew. So if I tell people, you're telling me two to three weeks, so I'll tell them six weeks and we'll be good. All right. I figured out this government speak after all this time. As far as celebrations go, the Baptist Church had a great July 1st celebration, as they always do, and Deputy Mayor, myself, Chief, and some of your folks were there, and it was just an honor to always be invited to their Fourth of July event because it is very special. And if you've never been next year, even if you're not Baptist, just come on down and see it because it is amazing. And Council, going along with the senior programming group, I was approached by two exceptional high school seniors, one from Hagerty and one from Oviedo, who would like to put together a youth advisory council to the city. And this is something similar to what Sanford has, it's called the Mayor's Advisory something or other. They, Michael McNamara and his partner, Christian, who is from, Michael's from Hagerty and Christian's from Oviedo, went out to, was it Boise State? Is that what they told us?
Boise State.
Boise State. And learned all about this and put together this whole entire, well, they call it the Constitution of the Youth Advisory Council, but they put a lot of work into it. So if it's okay with you guys, I'd like to explore this a little bit further with them and maybe get Patrick involved, and obviously Lonnie would be a great resource because he's done this before with other cities.
Sure.
Is that good?
Yes.
All righty, great. Well, I appreciate it. That is the end of my report, so let's see what else we have here. Before I go into future meeting dates, is there anything else for the good of the order? Mr. Cobb, Mr. Grude?
Nothing.
Patrick, anybody? No? All righty. Future meeting dates, we have Monday, August 6th, 6:30 p.m. is a regular session. August 20th, we have both a CRA meeting and a regular session, so that'll start at 5:30 for the CRA, 6:30 for the regular session. Thursday, that is Thursday, it is correct.